Over here at the side of the documents.
Chair, as soon as we start, we're going to get it.
Here's a petition for flowers.
Yeah, one by one.
But I'm questioning, question, can, he can, he can get there, promise I will. And there's a vote board, the board enough to use it. Yeah, because I think, I think there's a window of minutes. You guys ready?
Yes, sir.
Hello, everybody. Everybody, welcome. Thank you for coming out of the rain for our meeting this afternoon. So I call to order the special work session on the zoning ordinance rewrite for July 23rd, 2019. First, I'd like to say we advertised a closed session for this evening, but we're not going to hold it since we have a process, an ongoing process to hopefully solve the issue with the voters on, on the north end of our county. This is the last of these work sessions. For, so for us on the board, we might want to make sure that if we have anything we haven't seen or we want to add, we need to bring it up so that, in case we need to have another session or add something to the, to the program. If nothing else, Mr. Greskis, do you have any, anything to add?
No, if you don't mind, I will add to what you were alluding to earlier. I know members of board are fully aware, but just for anyone else watching or in the room, we have been working very closely with Louisa County and the respective registrars to try to outline some processes that will assist in potentially getting the voters that were reassigned relocated back to Goochlin and Louisa respectively. We've outlined a process that both counties have advertised for, starting last week. It will run again up through the process. Louisa's board meets on August 5th, our board meets on August 6th. Fundamentally, what we are doing is codifying the parcel boundary as the respective boundaries of both jurisdictions. That is the exact same boundary we had submitted to for the census boundary several months back now and that we had mutually agreed upon for that submission. What we believe this will do, and it's sort of a two-step process, both boards are going to be asked to adopt those borders through resolution at that meeting. Additionally, both counties are going to petition the circuit court to make sure that, I understand it's more of a procedural process that the circuit court can certify the actions of those boards and adopt those boundaries. What that does is it limits, well, it should allow the electoral board to more confidently potentially make decisions to bring voters back, knowing that there are no mapping related issues that would, would not make moving them back feasible. And so we think that this certainly should help the electoral boards in coming to the conclusions to assist our voters to bring them back. What I've been telling everybody is, is, you know, there's a lot of things that still have to align. The electoral board has to take appropriate motions and actions. Registars have to make formal moves of individual voters. It, it's not a silver bullet either. Also, one step I missed, the judge. We're hoping that the judge will weigh in and confirm the actions of the boards appropriately. The electoral board has to act. What we do believe this solves, fundamentally, it solves the local election vote if they bring individuals back into the respective counties. What is unclear is exactly the process as it relates to the state and federal elections. That was what sort of started this whole conversation in the first place. My understanding is, is there is potentially a process to allow either, and I don't want to speak out of tune of either split balling or split precincting. People may still have to vote based on the census line for their state and federal offices, but they would have the opportunity to vote for their local offices. Whereas of right now, since they've been moved, they'd actually be voting for local offices in the county that they don't pay taxes or live in. We have asked for state, or excuse me, federal census to expedite our review and potentially change that census line sooner as well. I can't tell you with certainty, we've asked our state and federal delegation members to assist us in that. Hopefully, we can get it moved, but I don't want to promise that everything is going to be solved. We're doing our best. We've done every legal means that we've been able to identify to be able to get this issued remedy for our voters. But we're, we are pushing as hard as we can. It really has to be remedied by early October because there are registration deadlines at the latest. And so we're hoping by, you know, middle, end of September, this is completely resolved. But again, the board of supervisors' actions would need to occur on August 6th. And then the rest of the decisions are quite honestly out of our hands. They rely on the electoral board to make decisions, courts to make decisions, registrars to make decisions. But we, our support to the registrar and electoral boards to the extent possible. Obviously, they're independent for a reason. We've offered support for them to have their own legal counsel as needed. And so we continue to push this issue, but it's, it's been something that's been of major importance to our residents, major importance to the board, and we continue to work on it. I don't think there has been an issue that myself and your county attorney's office have spent more time on in the past 60 days. And so it's, it's certainly something that we're trying to get to resolution the best we possibly can. But we'll keep, keep you posted as more, more decisions and process goes along.
Thank you.
All right, so next, Joanne, you want to take us through the program today?
Sure, thanks for coming, everybody. This is our third and final work session. Not final work session, but our first brush through the ordinance. We broke the ordinance up into three groupings so they'd be a little bit more manageable. And we've had three citizen meetings, and then this would be our third board of supervisors' work session. We had the same presentation last Tuesday, I believe it was, Tuesday or Wednesday. We had about 13 citizens at that meeting, and a lot of them are back today, so it must not be too boring. Glad to have you for a repeat performance. So I would like to start with this slide. We did it with the planning commission, just to keep everybody's focus on is what is the purpose of the rewrite? It's really to modernize, simplify, and clarify. We're not creating a lot of new text or changes in the process. It's really a cleanup and clarifying and modernizing the ordinance with a lot of format changes and things like that. So what we're going to cover today and what we covered at the citizen meeting is a sort of a wide range of topics. The first two sort of fell into better groupings. So the first meeting, we went through all the zoning districts. The second set of meetings, we went through all the development standards, and so this is sort of everything else. So it's, it's a little more disjointed. It's not less important. It's just doesn't have as much of a flow as the other one. So what we're going to cover is administration and enforcement, applications, the board of zoning appeals, non-conforming lots, definitions, overlay districts. New one is roads and access management, and I wanted to review some of the graphics that we've been working on. So I'm going to start with the administration enforcement. Everybody should have a packet. There's extra copies in the back if anybody needs a copy. So the administration enforcement section, this really had items that were spread entirely throughout the code. There were some in the general provisions, some in supplemental, some in other sections, and you really had to look around the code to get it. So it's really disjointed. So the, the concept was just to pull all those information that deals with that sort of thing, group it together. And basically, what this section talks about is that we have a zoning administrator, and they're responsible for enforcing the code, and it provides penalties if there is non-compliance of the code. So no change in any of the language, just group that information so it's easier to find. It also talks about building permits. So we shortened and clarified the building permit section. This was really out of date. It talked about how you had to submit your permit in triplicate and some really old standards and things like that. So basically, what it says is the building permits for our structures are required in accordance with the unified statewide building code. And then also, we clarify when certificates of zoning ordinance compliance are required. So if an accessory structure that is less than 250 square, 56 square feet does not require a building permit, they still need to come in and get a zoning compliance letter so that we can check setbacks. And it also clarifies that this is also needed for farm structures. So that's in the ordinance now and should be much more of a clear process. So that is it for the administration enforcement section. So any questions on that one before I move forward? Okay. So the next section is rezoning, proper amendments, and conditional use permits. So this is going to be a new section. All of this was in the code, but just spread out different, in different areas. So now it's going to be a new application section. So if someone's filing an application or a citizen, and that's going to be part of the, the first packet, this administration. It's just the second page. So if someone's filing an application, they can go to one place and get all the information. One thing we did add is we never had any information on proper amendments. So I know when some people were going through some of the cases, they were saying, well, proper amendments, it's not a rezoning, it's not in your ordinance. There was confusion about that. So this specifically states that a proper amendment follows the same process as a zoning, zoning application. So that's much clearer for citizens. And one thing we also did was codify the pre-application process. This process has worked well for the county. It increases the level of transparency. However, it's always been a policy. Everybody's gone along with it. But we did think it's important to put in our code since it is such an important part to our process. So this is similar to, to what we do now. So it, it references the community meeting, and it says the applicant shall schedule a community meeting at a time and place suitable for attendees. And the applicant shall verify with an appropriate date with staff before scheduling their meeting. The applicant has to notify the adjacent property owners, the planning commission, and the board. They must provide at least two weeks' notice, and the letter shall include enough information about the application so that people can, can decide whether they want to come to the meeting or not. At the meeting, the applicant shall present the application in detail, including conceptual plans, and allow for participation in dialogue. So these aren't open house type settings. These are a meeting where someone's up there presenting the case and allowing for questions and answers. They need to submit as to staff, a list of the attendees, and a summary of the meeting. We did add in here, since it's no longer a policy, in unusual circumstances, minor modifications to the schedule may be permitted by the director of community development. Perhaps they get the letter out in 14 days, but they got it out in 12 days. We may allow some modifications. Because it's in the ordinance format, we would not be able to waive any time, time constraints if this was in here. And we do include in there that following the completion of the pre-application process, which includes the community meeting, that's when they can file their official formal application. Again, process that we already do, but just making sure that it's in, in the code now. So one thing that we have found in the CUP section of the ordinance, and this is going to be a decision point for the board, is there is a provision in our ordinance that if a use is not permitted, somebody can bring forward and request it as a special exception. In fact, we've had somebody who tried to use this provision and want to bring apartments in a, in a certain district. And we said, no, you can't do that. There is this provision in the code. Typically, if someone wants to add a use or bring a use that we don't allow in the code, we would want to do an ordinance amendment and just not have anybody be able to bring anything that they want in. So our recommendation would be to delete this provision of the code. But that is going to be something for the board to decide, what are your thoughts are. So if somebody, you know, trying to think of something, somebody wanted to have a nuclear waste, they could just apply for a CUP in any district. And that sort of is in complete opposite of what we, how we manage our code. We've always told people, you know, our code is inclusive. If it's not specifically listed, it's not allowed. So this would allow anybody to ask for anything with a special exception. So staff's recommendation would be to remove this, but didn't know if the board had any feedback.
I mean, what if the special exception is really similar? You know, it's not quite there. I mean, nuclear waste, yes, way up here, but you know.
So we typically try to find something, a use that fits, you know, if it's not exactly. But really, if, if someone is introducing a new use that we have not contemplated, particularly after we update the zoning ordinance and we've added a lot of uses, I think we would want to go through an ordinance amendment and a public hearing process where we could benchmark other localities and things like that. So staff is very concerned about this and would recommend deletion.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, so the harm is just the time it takes?
The harm is, is that anybody could come in and ask for anything. So really, any use could be up for any district. I mean, you could be in a residential district and ask for a fast food restaurant or something because through a special exception.
But it still has to be approved, right?
Right.
And so the harm is that it takes people's time to go through something that may not make it through. It's that, I'm just trying to, I mean, I understand what you're saying. You know, some things are just completely unacceptable.
Right.
But trying to figure out the cost.
Where is this in the current code? Can you kind of point me?
Under conditional use permits.
Article, can you give me, okay, Article 27.
I mean, I like to give people as much flexibility as we can, but if it makes no sense, then it makes no sense.
Like I said, these were sort of spread throughout the code.
But Article 27 is conditional use, is right.
Yeah. That doesn't mean it's there, though. That's, that's the problem with our code. It's really hard to find stuff.
That's why we're doing this, right?
Yep. And if I have a hard time finding it, then it's really hard to find.
So like, special exception would be a key word, right?
I think, yeah, it's, that's on Article 27, Section 6, cases of uncertainty. Is that what we're talking about? Appendix A.
That's exactly right, and I think it looks, it's verbatim.
This would be for any use that is not in our code anywhere.
So anybody could introduce any use to any existing zoning district.
New technology, something that, because we didn't have data centers in our code at some point, right?
No.
So.
Joanne, does that, does that proviso give you any comfort at all? I mean, proviso, it's provided, you know, such use shall be in keeping with uses permitted. So in other words, does that give you some comfort that it has to be generally in line with the other permitted uses? Or does that still not give you the kind of comfort?
There is some comfort there, but, yeah.
You're still uncomfortable.
I, I think people in, in Goochlin like to know what they can expect in a zoning district, and this sort of opens it up a little bit.
A little bit of gray area. It's not as black and white as it could be.
Is the purpose to just for un, for unthought of, unimaginable uses, is that the idea?
Like, the only example I have, the only time someone tried to use it is they wanted to do apartments in B1. And they said, I should be able to ask for apartments through a CUP process. Luckily, we were able to talk them out of it, but if they really wanted to pursue it, they could have.
So their choice would have been to do a rezoning of the B1?
Well, right now, you couldn't do apartments in B1.
Right.
Nobody's saying, but rezoned it out of B1.
Rezoned it to.
We don't have an apartment zoning, don't we?
We don't have any apartment zoning.
Industrial and pick up some acres from.
So they just wanted, the contemplation was to keep it B1 with apartments by special exception. So there's, because you can't rezone in apartments. We don't have a zoning requirement.
And it's similar to homes for the age or some, some other uses in there.
Containment care facilities.
If we do leave this.
You'd have to have a zoning category. We don't have that. We'd have to change, huh?
It'd be a whole full-blown, full-blown zoning. So this is special conditional use for trying.
Well, I think what Joanne said earlier, you, we could introduce an amendment to the ordinance and have that heard prior to allowing them to file the application.
Or even run it, run it at the same time.
Yeah.
Because you'd have to amend the ordinance and then approve the rezoning vote. Because we don't have the zoning categories either.
I mean, the current case that we have going is going to require that, right?
Excuse me?
The current, the Maniket Town case, there's going to be, that would require an ordinance amendment and a rezoning.
Well, it's MPUD exists.
So MPUD allows it?
So we have, we have limited ways for people to do apartments. You can either do it in the MPUD district in Centerville, or you can have the 60 acres in West Creek. That's it. But say somebody, you know.
Let's put some apartments out here.
Right.
Up here, they would have to go.
They could request through this provision.
A CUP. If we took it out, they would have to request some sort of ordinance change to the zoning, to the zoning laws.
Ordinance amendment that we would look, and we would be able to look at the use and see whether it's appropriate in that district, what other districts it may be appropriate in. We'd be able to benchmark other locales.
Add that use to the zoning ordinance.
Yes. Yes.
That sounds like not an optimal way to create your zoning ordinance, but maybe happens sometimes. Would you just back into these things, right? Better than this, maybe. Is that, that's, I guess, your recommendation?
Our recommendation would be to treat all, every property that's zoned the same way.
The same.
The same.
Do you need a decision today?
Nope. We won't need one by the end of the process, so.
By the time we finish the process, I guess, when, when we finally get to vote on this, will you have a list to the? Okay, thank you.
All right. That was it for applications.
Chair, ask a question before we leave the, leave the pre-application process completely. When I first got on the board, I never, I went to some community meetings and there was rumblings at some of the more higher, higher profile ones where people thought it's not adequate to just notify adjacent, I think it was.
That's the one I started to ask as well.
Right, adjacent property owners. And I think we had talked, just in passing, a little bit about expanding the notice requirement. Is this a time to look at that, or should?
It is. The reason why we go with adjacent is because, say you do adjacent and one more out, then somebody's going to be like, well, I'm right across the street. Why didn't you do that? So we do many different ways to get people notified about the meeting. We put a zoning sign up when a pre-application is filed. So people should see the sign. They know to call us. We have a zoning sign section on our planning webpage. We have the notify me that anytime a community meeting is scheduled, if you've signed up to be notified of the community meetings, you're notified.
Regardless.
Regardless.
Regardless of where. You can't, you can't narrow that down by notify me in my district or something like that.
No, with this process, when we do, if, when we go to our new system, our new permitting system, you will be able to, to draw an area where you want to be notified of. We don't typically have a problem with people not knowing about it. You know, usually the people are there saying, well, I didn't get notified, but, but they still knew about it.
But they're there, right?
Mr. Chairman, is there value of giving zoning administrator more flexibility to require broader notice? And I, I think about the Innsbruck case that's just here. And that may not be adjacent. It might even be people in another county, at least to give yourself flexibility. And so the applicant doesn't use it against us, saying, your code only says I have to only notify adjacent. There may be reason, at least by giving you the authority to, to expand that.
I like that, yeah. And we do do that for towers. We go a little bit further out. So we'll, we'll put a notation in there to, you know, staff has the authority to have an expanded.
So the adjacent would be like just the, the minimum?
Yes.
That would be the minimum we would do, and then we could do more.
Right. And then anybody who comes to that community meeting, and if they sign in with their name and address, they do get the notification letters of when the public hearing is.
Okay, after that, but.
We'll clean up some later, but I just always got to point out to you on number two at the top of the page on, on pre-application process. So it's like the, you know, page four of your, of your handout. Just, letters shall include the date and time of the meeting and provide a detailed explanation of the application. I, I didn't see anywhere where the letter needs to tell you where the meeting's going to be held.
Okay. That'd be important information.
Oh, that's.
That's important, right. Go 20 clicks deep in the website and find that. You know, that's, that's one thing I. Yep.
Okay, any others before we move on to the next section?
I think ours, in that, of that, or this process, but our signs, our rezoning signs should be a little easier to read. I think they're kind of hard to read. The lettering is similar to the background. I think it'd be something we want to look at.
As we get through this batch, we can look at reprinting them.
Yeah, I'm going to get two in the weeds, but I can't help myself with every time. It's a real property disclosure form. It's part of the formal application. Is that, is that a form that we provide?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's reviewed by the county attorney's office before an application is advertised. All right, so the next section is the board of zoning appeals. So you will see a lot of notes on this one to the county attorney's office. A lot of the things in here are information that it looked like it was in there from when the BZA was first established, and it talks about how their, you know, terms should be laid out and things like that. A lot of this stuff now, in my opinion, it could be moved to the bylaws. However, I'm going to have the county attorney's office review this section. So very limited changes to this section, other than things that I think could be moved from the ordinance to the bylaws. But we just need to get the county attorney's feedback on that. A lot of this is, you know, a function of the state code and not really much we can change about that. So non-conforming lot structures and uses, again.
Joanne, did you skip them? So it looks like you skipped a little section on reapplying for an application. I mean, you didn't skip it, we just kind of.
There was no changes to that.
So if I may, an applicant may, shall not apply for a rezoning, a CUP or variance at least. Um, so, if I may, an applicant may, shall not apply for a rezoning, a CUP or variance at least twelve months is allowed since the terms made concerning a previous application for substantially the same piece of property. That doesn't sound like the standard I thought we were operating under. I thought, not substantially the same piece of property, but the same, same use, I thought. Not the same property, but you're not making sense, huh?
Yeah, I'll pull the state code language. I didn't flag that because that's the same language we currently use, but I'll look at state code.
Take a look at that, because that does not, my understanding of how, yeah, we have one.
I think it's the same, substantially same application or, but that, we'll have to just make sure it's in compliance with the state code. So thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you.
Think Callie might be doing it now.
Yeah, but you can go on, I'll let you know if I can.
Okay, so non-conforming law structures and uses, again, not many changes to this section. Again, this is, comes, most of this information comes right from the state code, so there's notes in there to the county attorney's office just to verify that we're in compliance with the state code, but we did not make any changes to this section. So that's it for the administrative type things. The next section is the definitions. Out of all the things, oh, I'm sorry.
If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. So under appeals from the Board of Zoning Appeals, I mean, you've got a comment, should we expand on this? Is that anything we need to look at?
Uh, that was a note to the county attorney's office.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
So, um, and that would be expanding in accordance with the state code requirements. Um, so every, out of everything that we're going over today, the definitions, we probably made the most changes to. Um, so what we did with the definitions section is we had went through our entire code and found, you know, similar words that we use quite often, such as flag laws, cul-de-sacs, that might not have been defined and provided definition. We've also went through all the uses and made sure all the uses have a definition. So, and then we've also deleted a few terms and, and modified a few, so I'm going to go over those. We have, there's probably, I don't know, six or seven of these pages, slides of new terms, so I'm not going to go over all of them. I'm not even going to read them all to you, but I'm going to, you know, give you time to look at them. But, you know, accessory apartment, adjacent, agricultural processing, amusement, recreation services, animal grooming, animal hospital, animal shelter. So these are all uses or terms in our code that have never been defined. I'll let you read through this page. Uh, one thing we wanted to do that sort of came out of the Summerall CUP case is we wanted to find automobile and motor vehicles. So that's something that's never been defined, and that became an issue. So not just uses, but things that we talk about on a regular basis. You know, buffer, we talk about that a lot, campground, car wash, cemetery, brew pub, brew pub's sort of a modern use that wasn't currently in our ordinance. Sidery, conservation areas. Cul-de-sac, distribution centers, dwelling manufactured homes, there's a state definition for manufactured homes that wasn't in our code. You know, easement, funeral homes, furniture stores, you know, again, these are just all uses that you'll find in the code, and so they now all have definitions. You'll see motor vehicle there, park and ride facility, retail services, schools, theaters, drive-in theaters, upholstery, veterinary hospital, warehouse, that sort of thing. Um, I don't know if you want to take a minute to look at that, or think about that, or if you just want me to start with the ones that we did delete. Anybody have any questions on the new ones?
Mr. Chairman, um, we are not defining brewery.
We define microbrewery.
That was a, microbrewery, got it.
Yeah.
And then, is there? So we, so farm, brewery, like looking at, oh, is considered a microbrewery, yeah, right, okay, gotcha.
And also maybe a brew pub? Brew pubs are anywhere too.
No, yeah.
That's it.
That's a new one. But that's a restaurant that prepares handcrafted natural beer intended for consumption on the premises. But then we've defined restaurant too, right?
Yes, restaurant's defined. Restaurant is an establishment where food and drink are prepared, served, and consumed mostly within the principal building.
So we don't have to get into like how much food they have to serve relative to the half of beer.
No, that's all state law, so we don't, because especially if that changes, when they get their ABC license, they would have to do that.
How is, how is drive shack classified?
Uh, commercial recreation.
Commercial recreation. Say it could be a golf driving range or whatever.
That's a recreational facility operated as a business and open to the public for a fee. Um, as we were going through this, we did delete three definitions. We had the term boarding house. We just did that short-term rental, address transient lodging, that's sort of an old term, so we recommended deleting that. General store would just now fall under general retail uses, and then hospital maternity. I don't think there's any hospitals that just do maternities anywhere. I think that's sort of a nineteen fifties term. Uh, we did modify a few definitions. Childcare center is one of the ones that we modified. Right now, it's, it included hours of operation. We tried to keep standards out of the definitions. They're harder to enforce when they're in the definitions. They had things like it could only be from seven AM to seven PM. You know, shift work, childcare may have different hours now. One thing that comes up pretty regularly is what is a dwelling unit? Some people might have a pool house, and they may have a bathroom and a sink out there, and they might even have a microwave. That's not considered a dwelling unit. A dwelling unit is when you either have a stove or a stove or range hookup. That's when it class, becomes classified as a dwelling unit. Flood plane, we modified that to, to our current definitions. Home occupation, we made some changes, and we reviewed that with you during the development standards, so we revised those definitions to match up with that. Junkyard, we modified to be current with the state code requirements, and land sales office is one that we modified. So again, minor changes, but, but significant changes to this section. That may be one that you might want to just sort of digest and, and get back with me at a later date. When you're ready for me to move on, just let me know. Ready? Okay, good. Okay, the next section is our overlay districts. Um, what we did here is, you know, similarly with what our purpose is with the rewrite, is we shortened and clarified the statement of intent. The ordinance had identified some of the district boundaries, but not all of them, so we included in there that the maps of the different overlay districts could be found in the comprehensive plan. We reformatting each district so they are more consistent in appearance, so we outlined the standards in a similar way. You can tell that the overlay districts were all done at different times, and they all looked very different. We clarified that all the requirements of the overlay district are in addition to the underlying zoning requirements. So if you have a property that's in the overlay district and it's on B one, you have to meet all of the B one requirements, and in addition, you have to meet all the overlay requirements. One change we're recommending is that we are exempting signs from the COA requirements. With the new Supreme Court ruling, we can have very limited review of signs. Signs, when somebody comes in to get a COA, when they might be just changing out the, the sign on their attached wall, it takes ten days for them to get a COA, when it's really a simple change, they're just changing what they said, what the other business was to what their business is, so we don't believe it needs to have a COA. So the one process that we've been trying to move to, and this would codify this, is to have more administrative review of the COAs, trying to use the carrot and stick approach, is that if an application meets all the requirements, right now, supposedly, anything with a building permit in an overlay district should go to the DRC, the Design Review Committee. What this is saying, stating is that if they meet all the requirements of the overlay district, it can be removed, reviewed administratively. It would be a ten-day process. If they didn't meet all the requirements, or they wanted a modification or a change in standards, then they could go to the DRC and ask for that. So that would be, it's, it's a way to encourage people to meet our standards, keep them moving in a timely manner, and have less review by the Design Review Committee. So, yeah, and if they did not like staff's decision, they could appeal it to the Design Review. Anybody have any concerns with that change?
Have we not built this already?
We have sort of been trying to move through that, it's never been codified, so this would codify sort of where we've been moving towards. We deleted from each section that states that businesses located in the same building must share one ground mounted sign. This is already in the sign ordinance, so it doesn't need to be in section. This last, next one is, we had a recommendation to delete that sign shall be dimmed or turned off after business hours. We did have some concerns at the citizen meeting. People liked that provision and did request that that stay. So we, I, I have no issue with leaving that in. One change we made to the Route Six, Six Fifty corridor, so this is River Road, Patterson. So right now you have three different setbacks that are allowed, and based on which landscaping requirement you used, you could have a different setback.
Okay, I'm sorry. The one you just said you didn't mind putting back in. I think back to the conversation that we had with some of the folks that had these message boards and those kind of things. Part of their information intent is to get out even when they're closed. And so, and, and, or some of those facilities are not going to have true operational hours, churches, fire stations. How, how would that apply to them?
Right. And, and that's sort of led into a long discussion, again, about LED signs, so that's, you know, that's one that I told you that we have to bring back some standards to you. There were some concerns expressed at the citizen meeting that the LED signs, you know, are not in keeping with the character of our county. They should not be located in overlay districts and all. So that's going to be a major decision point as before we adopt this ordinance of how we're going to address LED signs and all. I don't think there's clear consensus from citizens on that issue. So.
There will be a decision point for the board before adoption?
Yes.
And you're, and what you're saying is that this will also be a decision point?
It's going to have to be, um.
Sorry.
Um, so the River Road and Patterson Avenue corridor, they have the setbacks, a building setback can range anywhere between a hundred twenty-five, if you do this landscaping, a hundred fifty if you do this landscaping, a hundred seventy-five if you do this landscaping. We looked at the landscaping and then looked at what changes we're making to the landscaping. It was very minor differences, and most people always go with the less, the, the closest setback with the highest landscaping standards. So our recommendation would just be to have one landscape standard, which we sort of combined all three, the best of all three of them. So the setbacks wouldn't change, so the building setback on Patterson Avenue would still be a hundred twenty-five. If they had the parking in the rear, the building setback would be seventy-five. River Road is a hundred twenty-five feet, and then the parking lot setback has to be fifty feet. So the change in recommendation would be, instead of having three different landscaping standards, we would have one landscaping standard. In addition to have the landscaping requirements that are, are required for the underlying zoning, they'd also have to put in one large deciduous tree per one hundred feet, one small deciduous tree per one fifty linear feet, one shrub every ten feet, or they can also do a berm. And, and we believe that, we tested this out on some of the properties, some of the newer ones, like the mini warehouse and some of the new development, and it was comparable to what we, what we're currently requiring. Any questions or concerns with that change?
I guess in your, your round, large, small, medium, or old, will only define.
Yes.
So it's not.
And, and they also, also defined in the landscape section, I believe, and I will double check that.
Make sure the diameter.
Yes, I know, I know the diameter, but I just.
Yeah.
Change to both the Oilville and Centerville, so with our new landscape ordinance, we are doing everything now by linear feet. Our prior code did everything by square footage. Linear feet is much more easier to understand and for people to use. So we are changing everything to linear foot to make that compatible. And then there was some information in the Centerville District about raised signs. Raised signs is when the letters project. That's currently not in our sign ordinance. We're recommending deleting that. Raised signs would be permitted as long as they don't project over, over twelve inches, which is in our sign ordinance. We have not sent, uh, sent these changes to the, to the Design Review Committee yet. Right now, we only have two members on the Design Review Committee. We do not have a forum. However, I will be reviewing all the changes with the two DRC members and getting their feedback as well on these changes. Anything else on the overlay district?
Uh, so, um, the actual districts themselves, the boundaries of the districts. If that wanted to be reviewed to change for less or more, is that part of the zoning rewrite, or is that part of also the comp plan?
I think probably the best time to do would be through the, the comp plan.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah. Okay. Roads and access management, this is not one that we planned on doing through the rewrite, but as we got further into it, right now, we currently have access management standards in our subdivision ordinance. However, the access management includes things like when someone needs to do a traffic impact analysis, when you're developing your property, how much spacing you need between driveways and things like that. It's really things that come up in the early process when we're reviewing a conceptual plan. So our recommendation was to pull this out of the subdivision ordinance and move it into the zoning ordinance, into that development standard section. Again, we want a developer to be very clear what the requirements are, not a gotcha at the end, which this one, if it's in the subdivision ordinance, it could be. So we want somebody to be able to go to the development standard section and see all the applicable changes. So this is one that we didn't plan on, on doing at this time, because it did take some time, but I do think a better place for it is in the development standards. So what this access management is, is it, it addresses the development standards for roads, as I said. So what we did is we shortened and clarified the statement of intent. We updated the definitions and deleted ones that are already defined in the zoning ordinance, since this is now being moved to the zoning ordinance. What this does is it identifies seven access categories for roads, and the road categories, we updated based on our major thoroughfare plan. So again, trying to take our, our plans and tie them together better with our plans. So we've taken our MTP standards and, and made sure they match with our access, access management standards. So each road is assigned an access category, and then the access category sets standards for driveway spacing, crossover spacing, signal spacing, and turn lanes. So if you go into that section, you'll see, for an example, that, um, say Fairground Road is an access three. Access three is a minor arterial, and it has higher speeds, moderate traffic volumes, rural areas, the emphasis is on mobility. So then you would go to section three, and it tells you that, you know, the driveway spacing has to be six hundred and sixty feet, the crossover spacing is one thousand three hundred and twenty, signal spacing, if you do a turn lane, what your storage and taper needs to be. So it's all there for a developer or for a citizen to understand what a road is being doing. So that, that's always sort of been in our code, but it was sort of hidden. I think I worked here for probably eighteen months before I ever even knew we had it, so.
You can find it, but.
Yeah. So I think it's really important to move this to the zoning ordinance. I think it'll help everybody in understanding one turn lanes are required, what the storage and taper needs to be. And then in the graphics section, we give some examples of the joint crossover spacing and all that, so I'll show you that in a minute. Some other changes to this section is the standards often refer to the planning and engineering departments. We changed that reference to BOD administrator. We did delete some graphics that were either repetitive because they were already in the MTP or they weren't effective. And we deleted the flaglock standards because that's already in the zoning ordinance and it actually conflicted with what was in the zoning ordinance. So again, that's sort of some of the things that we find that different sections conflicted with others. So any questions on access management? All right, the next section is the graphics. This is the only section that we have not done in-house. We have hired, um, a consultant to help us with some of the graphics just because we didn't have anybody on staff who, who really had the skills to do that. And I think the graphics section is something that I've always wanted to have in the code. I think some people are visual learners and some people like to read things. So I think, you know, having a, you know, a section on measurement and people can go to that and see how we measure height and things like that compared to other, you know, localities. I think if you have it in the text form and in a graphic form, I really think it would help people. So the first few graphics are going to be in this, a new measurement section and there'll be text that goes along with all these. But what it shows is, you know, this, so this is a corner lot. This would be the front yard, this would be the side yard, uh, front, rear yards. This is a double frontage lot, if you're on two streets, you have to meet the front yard setback on both ones. It talks about flaglots, uh, the stem has to be fifty feet wide. So there'll be some text that goes along with this, but visually it shows people, um, what the different things are. So the same thing for when it's a cul-de-sac lot, what's your front yard, what's your side yard? How do you measure a lot with when it's a, you know, not a rectangle, square lot? So it's at ninety, you do a midpoint and you draw a ninety-foot, uh, right angle and that's how you, where you measure the midpoint. It's measured at the front setback, not at this portion. So again, it's, there's going to be some text that goes along with this, but there's this whole, really this whole measurement section. Accessory structures, so accessory structures are not allowed, allowed in the front yard. So it shows what's considered the front yard. It has to be, need a five-foot rear and side yard. So this gray area shows you where you can place your accessory structure. If you have an access easement or a private road along your side, you do, your accessory structure has to be thirty-five feet. So this shows you how you, where you can place your accessory structure if you are adjacent to an easement. Building height is a question we get all the time, how do you measure the building height? So what this is showing is that we measure to a flat roof to this point. However, if you have a parapet, it can extend, extend six feet above that. When it's, there's a slope grade, you take the height at an average elevation. If there's a ridge roof, you take it to the midpoint of the ridge. If it's a gam, gambrel roof or a mansard roof, you take it to the top point. And then what this is showing is that the building height, you can have a spire or, uh, something like a decorative that's not counted towards the, um, height. So again, just showing people how to measure height. Again, there'll be text that goes along with this to explain it in a little more detail. One of the changes that we have recommended through this process is to allow projections for architectural features. We are one of the few localities that does not have a projection ordinance. So when we have a thirty-foot front yard setback, that means everything has to be behind that, that thirty feet. The steps, the gutters, the, uh, you know, the, the bay window, everything has to be behind that thirty feet. With some of our smaller lots, they're having trouble with that. So, um, they have asked for us to consider projections. We are saying that an architectural feature, uh, can project three feet into a, a side or rear yard. So that would be, say, a bay window or a chimney or something like that. We also have things like, um, for a residential generator on pads, we've had people putting them right on property lines. People were concerned about that. So if it's a generator unit on a pad, we're showing that that's an accessory structure, would have to meet a five-foot setback. So once there's more text with this, it'll be much easier to understand. This calculation shows how you measure open space. So if you have a utility right of way, such as a power line or something, that area cannot be counted as open space. So it shows that that's not included. If you have a pond or a floodplain area, you can only count fifty percent of that, that's what that's showing. Again, once you have the text with this, it'll be more explanatory. Another graphic that we worked on was the site distance triangle. We have that referenced several times in the code. What you do is you measure twenty-five feet from this, from the, the property line along the road. Twenty-five feet from the property line back, you draw this triangle. And, uh, things like signage and tall landscaping and such cannot be within that site distance triangle. So whenever we reference the site distance triangle, we will reference the figure so that people can go to the figure or the graphic and, and see it in a, in a graphic manner. We talked about floor area ratio, which is hard for people to understand. So basically a property with multiple stories can have the same floor area ratio. So this is showing that, um, when we do the text, it'll be actually the calculation of how to come up with the floor area ratio. So this would get put into the signage section. So this first, first few slides, there'll be a special measurement chapter that will go with the text. These other slides will get put in the different sections that it is pertaining to, such as signage types. Will go in the signage section. So we have a definition section that defines all of these signs. This will be the graphic that will go below it that shows you graphically what these different signs look like. Ground mounted sign, wall sign, roof sign. We also talk about monument signs, um, what's unacceptable, what's acceptable. You know, we have, we require it to be, you know, ground mounted, you know, with a structure. Some people want to do like a pylon sign and then put two courses of work around it. That would not be considered a ground mounted sign. How you measure signage is difficult when it's not a, um, typical shape. So this gives you the different ways of how to measure it depending on the shape of the side, whether it's a circle or a diamond or, or something like that. It gives you the different ways to measure it. Again, that's sort of the questions that we always have to, it's always asked and sometimes staff even interprets it differently this way, everybody's on the same page. This would go with signage, um, and this is for subdivision signs. They only have to be five feet back from the internal road and twenty-five feet from that. So that graphically shows that. We talked about this, I think when I did the sign ordinance, we had this graphic about the height. If the property drops down, the sign can be measured from the street. We had call, have a pole sign, um, that's allowed in some of the overlay districts, but we didn't have a graphic of that. This section would go with the lighting section. So these are sort of the unacceptable, not allowed type of lighting. These are the dark sky compliant and the acceptable lighting standards. So we would be able to, to have, show somebody when somebody said, "What kind of lighting can I do?", we'll now have a graphic to, to hand out to them. We talk a lot about tree caliper measurement, that deals with the small and large deciduous trees and things like that. So this talks about where you measure that caliper. If it's, um, six inches above the ground, um, or four inches, or four inches or less.
If it's four inches.
If it's four inches or less, thank you, then you measure it sixteen. If it's more than that, then you measure it at twelve. So if it's a large tree, you measure it at twelve, if it's a tiny tree, you measure it at, um, six. These have to deal with the overlay districts. The overlay district in Oilville has a, um, three-story maximum, that's what that shows. This talks about how to screen building equipment, screen from, you know, the street, from, from view, showing you how, where, where it has to be screened from, appropriate ways to, to screen dumpsters. And then these last ones deal with the, the, um, access management. So there's a section in there in shared access. So this shows you, you discourage tripping along the road and everybody having a driveway. You want more of a shared access. Joint and cross, cross access, there's standards in the access management, um, and that graphically shows that. Also with the cross access easements, that's, there's standards in the access management of what can be allowed and what can't. This shows it to you graphically, how you do it. Same with driveway throat layout. So it's sort of showing you as you pull in, you can't have an access right here because if somebody was turning in, they'd back up in the road. And there's different throat lengths based on the, the type and use of development. So that's all in the access management. So those will all get plugged into the appropriate sections of the code. Any specific traffic question? Again, these are still under review, sort of in draft form. We're going to be adding some text to some of them. And still working with the consultants to clean up some of them. Questions before I move on?
Yeah, just wondering quick, Ms. German, uh, yeah, rooftop HVAC, shielding and whatnot, how would the height be measured on that? Is it, uh, top of the shielding or the top of the roof or...
So if it's on the roof, it's not, it wouldn't be part of the height calculation? So they could go above that with the screening?
And then also the screening, that would be allowed to go above?
Yeah. All right, so project timeline. So just sort of a summary, and so in May, we reviewed, um, with citizens and in the boardwork session, all the zoning districts and our U standards. In June, we did the development standard, which included the parking, plant and development, rural plant and development, lighting signs and landscaping. Today, we did all the things that we did today, which was sort of all those miscellaneous sections. So we have hit the first draft of the entire code. So we will be putting this all together for you, putting them in your notebooks for you. We will be getting them online. I have been keeping a list of things that have come up, changes. I think before today, I was at eighty-eight items, uh, that we need to go back and check. We need to come back with you with the LED signs. We'll need to come back to you with all the listing of all the decision points for the board. We're still hoping to be on a timeframe of, uh, the board referring this to the planning commission in August. During August, we plan on making all those final changes, going through my list of eighty-eight items and anything else that came up, doing some research on, on other topics that have come up, such as the signs. Completing that by the end of August with a public hearing by the planning commission in September. If they take action on it, it would be before the board in October, um, with the ordinance going into effect in January. Again, this, the, the, those September and October dates may shift thirty days, but we're still trying to stick to that schedule. We'll probably need a, one more work session, I would think, before the board would want to advertise this, to sort of go over any of those, some of those big topics that we talked about, such as the LED signs and things like that, have a summary of all those decision points. So the light, we, we are starting to see the light, it's dim, but it's there.
It's there.
Yes. It's far away and it's dim, but it's, it's definitely getting there. So, um, I don't know if we want to... You have a question, Sharon?
So we, we want to implement January one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what is the absolute latest date this board can act? I know it was October, it might be November, whatever, what is our draft date date?
Any time, any public hearing that you'd like to set prior to December thirty-first? So there'd be the December board meeting, however, if the board wanted to call a special meeting later in the month, you might be getting into holidays at that time, but December would be the, the latest date.
Even though there may be changes, which is ready to go.
That's, I guess it's another reason to try to stick to the schedule we have laid out because if we do run into things that we'll need overhaul, we'll have to advertise other meetings that are going to be on the October date.
Well, that's sort of what I was asking.
So that gives us some time if things do slide. That being said, Joanne had suggested that there's some work to be done on even the outstanding things we've taken away from the past three meetings and some other feedback. Joanne, were you thinking middle, late, middle or latter, later August?
Late August, yeah, to get everything done.
So, uh, you said, I didn't see it on the earlier slide, but you said something about we need one more workshop.
That, we have nothing scheduled, that was my recommendation. Late August.
Because what is all?
We, yeah, we have to, we have a lot to do before we get that information ready for you.
Can you get us, um, it would be helpful for me, I don't know about the other board members, but if we had a complete package where I could actually, because a lot of times I'm looking at these things and I'm thinking about cross preferences and I'm trying to understand where, where some of these things might fit in the big picture. So do you think by then you'll have like a whole packet that we can flip through and say, this is, this is pretty much what the code is going to look like?
Yes, we, we will have the, the notebooks for you at that time with everything in there.
All right, well, it'd be good to have that before the meeting to be able to, I mean, it's hard, it's hard to, you know, listen to you and review it for the first time.
And we can definitely get you a draft right now of all of it. There may be some tweaks and changes with our, you know, as we review our list of eighty-eight things that we need to go back and look at, but we can put one together now for you if you'd like.
Just, just before, before we have the next workshop, would be nice. So what's the latest you can advertise for the October first, put this advertising for the October first hearing?
They would be advertised fourteen days prior, Lisa, so Lisa would can pull up the dates.
So the board meeting would be the first, October one. We'd have to advertise the twenty, the nineteenth and twenty-sixth of September.
Okay, so I think that kind of gives us an idea, we can...
That's our, that's our process.
So I think if we can, if you can give us a, a clean package at the end of August or, you know, give us a few days before that August workshop to review something, I, that would, you know, speaking for myself, that would help me get my head around the timeframe that you're talking about.
We have a lot to get done in August, but I, I think it's manageable and I, I think we, what, what my desire would be to have everything with section numbers, you know, a lot of them just says section XX. Have that for you, the whole packet, a list of all the changes, a list of decision points that need to be made and all, everything together by the end of August. It's going to be tight, but I think we can do that.
So may I ask, I guess that maybe we shoot for some work session in the week of the twentieth, but with a goal of a week ahead of time, getting packages out to the board, so you have a little bit of time before that?
And I guess to the planning commission as well, obviously if we make changes, if a lot of changes come down from August, we'll get an update. But again, I go back to, don't want to put the planning commission in a position of handing them something the night of the meeting and say, hey, you know...
Should we have a joint work session?
That, that...
Certainly they're...
We can invite them.
Yeah, keep in mind, they've been having their own meetings like this prior to all of their meetings. But certainly I, I think if we have one, uh, before, at least it's still a work session, they're, they're having a public hearing on the fifth, so if we invite them that last week and give them the package at the same time, we could potentially host a joint meeting and keep it a work session format.
That's a great idea.
If we can, I can ask Lisa to work with you tomorrow and get the date locked in. And we can do the same simultaneously with the planning commission. And then we'll advertise that and get it out on all of our channels for everybody to, to get that calendar on their books too. that calendar on their books, too.
It's going to be a crunch next four weeks.
Sure will.
We do this every 50 years, right?
You have to wait till I retire to do it again. So you have to wait at least 13 or whatever it is. Yes.
Any other questions or comments? If not, what I'd like to do is kind of open it up for citizens' comments, questions.
I'd just say, two things moving back together there. Dealing with family daycare, to make sure you got that on your 88.
Yeah, I got that on my 88.
Hours of family daycare. And we talked about adult daycare also being included.
The, this came up at the last meeting. So we have childcare centers where we had removed the hours of operation. Family day home, which is if you have five or less, you're protected by the state, also looking at changing the hours of operation for that. Adult daycare, making sure there's no hours of operation. And then it came up that there is some need for overnight respite care, where people, you know, have an elderly or a sick relative, and there's places where they can go and spend overnight. So those are some of the things that came up from the citizens that were part of my 88 items, I promise. I think there are 85, 86, 87, so. So we're going to be adding some changes to that. And again, any of those sorts of changes that we make, that's going to also come to you. So you're going to have two lists of changes. You're going to have the list of the changes that were presented during these, and then the changes that we made from when you were presented it to it and the change, and changes that have occurred.
And also the question of place of worship, that definition, someone asks if they are home, if there is a place of worship. Are you talking about like a Bible study or something?
No, like a church.
Just that's going in in that front?
Right.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've organized, it's helpful. I know there's a lot, 88 items. You know, my initial thought is the, there's a lot to do in a very short timeframe. And I think depending on the amount of changes and how they flush up some items as students' citizen comments, because I've been gathering, could be a little bit weighty. You know, you think about the digital sign, you think about some of the broader issues. And I think that to try to push this thing through in a few weeks, I think a lot of August, we're talking weeks, and I'm talking about months, appears a little bit very aggressive to me. You know, Joanne's done a good job of trying to put a lot, but there is a lot to do. I think the definitions, you know, for example, it gets into also broader issues, things that aren't on here, like the Taco House, the service district. I mean, I said the definition of that, our community, emptying overlay districts, rural enhancement, statement of intent. So, you know, we've done one with Joanne, but it just got to get to some of those broader indexes, like in the definitions. I think, again, that just takes time. You know, overlay districts are all the issues as well, you know, particularly about statement of intent. And I think that also sets the stage for a good process. Like, you know, who's listening here today, I know you all are looking to clean up the overall objective of this, is really not changing policies, but for opportunities to be business of things and decision points for the board. We just want to have ample time to really consider it thoroughly.
Thank you.
I want to echo that the more that you can put in the definition, the more clearer it is to people, they can look at the definition and see, "Oh, that's what you mean by this." It's, it's a little easier to point to the definition section. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sunny?
I just want to say, I was really glad to see the accessory uses on smaller lots, because I, I think there are some concerns about things like generators on some of these smaller lots. Yeah. Appreciate that.
That was one of the things we wanted to clear up, because that does come up fairly very regularly.
Yes. And I think the, the graphics are very good, because, you know, it's really easy to say, "Oh, well, it's so much, and it's so high." Yeah. And the sign, the sign graphic with the building, where this is that kind of a sign, I think that really is going to be very helpful.
Good. Thank you. I'm, I'm excited about the graphics section.
No, it's a really good idea.
Thank you, Joanne, for all your hard work. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Joanne. Anyone else? No? Any other comments from the board? Thank you to our two attorneys filling in for Tara today. So if nothing else, we will adjourn the board of supervisors to August 6th at 1:30 PM. We have a financing audit committee meeting, followed by the 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM meetings, and they're all open to the public. Thank you all.
We have something in between there.
Two-thirds will be celebrating the rollout of phase one of the finance system.
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. Everybody's welcome to that as well.
Cake and cookies.
That makes it sense.